I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission which has been duly posted to order. At this time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Mike Mesmar to lead us in an invocation.
Dear God, thank you for the gathering of the people here today that we may serve you. And I just want to say especially thank you for the gathering of the people from the Navy and the military that God may shame down on them and protect them in all endeavors. And thank you for serving in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We're glad to have you here at our meeting and especially glad to be able to recognize some important members of our community who give a lot of service to our community. And I'm going to begin with the first item on the agenda, which is special recognition to the Navy Reserve on its, on their 100th anniversary of selfless services provided by individual reservists past and present in defense of our nation.
No ma'am, they just wanted like a picture taken.
Okay. So have the naval reservists come on up? You may want to tell, introduce yourself to the Republicans room and talk about the mission of the Naval Reserve Center here in Harlingen. And we're very proud to have it. It's a wonderful, wonderful facility and we love having you here.
Sure. I'll make a very brief, I'm Captain Mills Harrenson, I'm the CO of the Armed Forces Reserve Center and the CO of the Navy element there. This represents my full-time support staff minus, minus three people who have our single parents and their things off and stuff like that. Our mission is really to support the sons and daughters of Harlingen in the Rio Grande Valley that are members of the Navy Reserve in their training and mobilization readiness in order to provide a qualified and, qualified and ready reservists to the Navy and Marine Corps teams and joint forces worldwide. And we're here as the active duty staff, but this centennial is actually in recognition of 100 years of naval service and there have been many sons and daughters of Harlingen and the Rio Grande Valley that have put on the cloth of their country and have been part of the Navy and the broader Department of Defense that has defended this country. So we appreciate the warmth, recognition, and the support from Harlingen. And we're grateful for this opportunity to be recognized and say thank you.
If you, one of the things that happens out there that I've had, that's important to experience is to, is not only to see the naval services deployed from that, from that center actually, but they come, they come through that center, then they come home to the community after, after deployment and they reunite with their families. It's a very moving experience to see that. And it obviously, you know, it's a hard thing to do, to be separated from family and to go into a war zone and, and we actually see already men and women come back through that facility. It's one of the many things that they do to support all of our reservists and our military. We also have, one of you belongs to Diana.
He's not on, on leave ma'am. He's not on leave of Hawaii.
That's right. He's on active duty and on the, on the fleet right now.
All right. Well, she was telling me about that, so we feel another connection to you. It's one of your, one of your staff, one of your staff's works here in, sorry. Somebody's right-hand man, I don't know. Probably everybody's right-hand man downstairs. All right. Well, we want to congratulate you in, in celebrating this 100 years of the Navy Reserve and again, appreciate and recognize your mission here with us here in Harlingen. So we'll stand up for our, our commission.
You can't see the camera, you can't see, I can't see you. One more.
North A and B Street, District 2. And have the city manager talk a little bit about that.
This is District 2, which is Commissioner Newhorn, which coincidentally couldn't be here today because he wasn't feeling very well. But we were out there February 21st and we picked up a total of 10.97 tons of debris. Very successful neighborhood clean sweep. A whopping total of 109 tires throughout the neighborhood. A lot of tires. You see here some of the cadets from MMA that they're out there almost every time we have a clean sweep, so we certainly want to thank them for being very supportive to what we do. And all the volunteers that help us. You see some of the volunteers out there picking up some of the trash. And this is the, some of the MMA cadets and well, some of the Harlingen Police Explorers that were out there helping us as well. I want to thank Evidas and the enforcement folks out there because they're, they're out there every month, rain or shine. So thank, thank them and all the volunteers for, for helping us. The next one is going to be March 14th. It's going to be at the East and Land Street between New Hampshire and Massachusetts. I do want to say ma'am, that I was recently watching the newscast and our program has been so successful that some of the other communities are now doing the same thing and they're calling it the same thing that we're doing. And so thank, thank you to all the staff and the volunteers that make it successful.
All right. Well, thank you. Congratulations to everybody here. Just make, we're going to hand out some certificates now if you would join me to help do that. And first, I'd like to call the Marine Military Academy Group, Sergeant Baker. Well, again, we want to thank you. You all are always there lending a helping hand to our community in so many different ways. This is one of the ways you do it and we really appreciate it. So we want to recognize good at, good at partying for their service this last clean sweep. We have certificates here for all of you. Folks that participated in this. Once again, thank you very much for all that you do to help our community and beautify it. All right. Thank you. Members of the Harlingen Police Explorer Post Number 3077, if you'd all like to come on up here, you know, these are our, very proud of our police department and the leadership in our police department who sponsor great youth organization, our police explorers who get to do a lot of interesting things, don't you?
Yes.
You actually learn about the career in law enforcement and you enter, you enter competitions, right? You go to competitions and learn how, or you demonstrate your skills that you've learned in the program that you would use actually in, in, in everyday law enforcement activities. So it's a great program. Thank you guys for being the explorer advisors. I mean, it's a, you know, this is something that they do on top of everything else they're, they're doing that they, that they run this program and it's a great, great program for all, all of these dudes that are involved. And so additionally to that, that demonstrates their willingness to serve the public side and participate in this clean sweep so we more recognize each and every one of you. Hopefully, hopefully we got a certificate. Diana Casas, Kayla Almaro, Ethan Esquivel, Elias Sanchez, Marlene Villanueva, Caleb Ramirez. I'm going to run out. And he says Gomez.
Isis.
Isis. And.
We'll get their names ma'am. Get some of them.
Okay. Get the names for you guys and we do, do, we're going to get you certificates. We want to, again, thank you so much for your efforts and help with this clean sweep. It really is important for the community to keep it what they need it clean and this is the only way we do it. Thank you.
Everybody's kind of squeezed in, especially, especially the advisors in the.
Jim, you want to come and get a picture? Maybe Kester?
Okay. I'll give you a couple of chances. One, two, three. That's pretty good. One more for the road. One, two. Now you have to.
We also want to recognize the Harlingen Police Officer Law Enforcement Association for participating. Really grateful also to you all for participating in this important activity, doing the search of the community every, every day, but in your, in your real job, but this very time coming out to help us, it's really important. Tom Ramona, Alfredo Albiar, Joshua Curtis, Marciso Noyola, and.
We'll get it.
Okay. Thank you guys. Appreciate it. And then, well, we have some citizen volunteers that came out. Thank you all. Basie Deluna and Lily Deluna and Janie Curtis. Are the Delunas here? We want to make them do, okay. Thank you. All right. I have three, it's the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 18th, 2015. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none is your motion to approve the minutes.
I make the motion to approve.
Second. All is favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. On the consent agenda, are we going to take the investment report? No?
We figure we put it on, but if we can take it off, if you want.
I didn't know whether you were planning a presentation. All right. Consent agenda items 4A through G. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All is favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item 6, consider taking action to allow the Harlingen Water Works to proceed with a public offering for the sale of a 0.78 acre tract of land being a part of Lot 18 Leacher Estate subdivision, re-subdivision of Blocks 2 and 3, Chester Park subdivision in Cameron County, burning map of re-subdivision reported in volume 20, page 27 of MRCC Texas.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity to present this to you. Little history, the.
Yeah, sorry, I missed it.
Sturridge Place Water Corporation historically, historically Harlingen's service area stopped at Dixieland Road. And west of Dixieland Road, from Dixieland Road all the way to White Range Road, from the Arroyo all the way to Primera was the Sturridge Place Water Supply Corporation. And at the, of course, they had been a corporation, it's small alliance, a few fire, very few high drips and so, and that's one of the reasons for the issues that we're facing in some of the annexations. But they bought property in 1969 for an elevated water storage tank. And the Harligen acquired the corporation in 1983 and all their assets, including the lot and, and the tank. The size, the location, and the height of the tank was not compatible with the, with the waterwork system, so it was never put in operation and has been just a, a maintenance problem for, for quite a few years. So the, the location of the property is just north of the expressway, west of Chester Park Road. It's on Osborne Road. It's a residential subdivision, fairly large lot. And the, we've been maintaining this lot now for, since 1983 without benefit of actually using the tank. So we finally decided to surplus this, or get permission from you to surplus it and, and try to sell the property. Of course, the problem has been the tank was their 130 foot tall water tank. And you will also notice how close it is to this, this residence. And so there's, it is a residential lot in a residential area. But the, we're happy to report that the, the tank, some of you have seen this, hopefully this will load and operate, but as of three weeks ago, the tank is, is now gone. Contractor compromised the, the west legs and then compromised sections on the east leg and jerked these sections out and the tank fell perfectly. And they've now removed it and it's gone. This was the salvage company that is now out of business, that's, a week before they, they went out of business. And it's not, anyway, this is a video, but so, but that's it. But we'll, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. But again, we're asking for your authorization that we can proceed with the, the surplusing and the offering for public offering this property.
Is there any, if I have any questions on this? If not, then we need a motion to take action to allow the Water Works to proceed with the public offering.
Here, I'll make a motion that we proceed to give staff authorization to authorize the Water Works Department to go forward with their.
All is favor say aye. Opposed, like, signed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Skip to item 5. Item 5 is to consider taking action to adopt an ordinance on first reading prohibiting the use of designated groundwater under the property of Valley Solvents Chemicals at the northeast corner of Tam Lane and Highway 107 in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city Harlingen supporting certification for municipal setting designation that's required by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality.
Few months ago, we were contacted by Attorney Cynthia Bishop, who's here with us today on behalf of Valley Solvents. They're requesting that they're filing, they're going to be filing, or are filing an application with TCEQ to approve what is called a municipal setting designation, which allows them to, another way of avoiding the expense and cost of remediating a chemical leak on the property and constant maintenance. And by, by getting this designation, they're essentially telling TCEQ that they will not use the groundwater on the property now or anytime in the future to protect against any health consequences from the plume of chemical leaks, in this case, very small under the property. To get that application through TCEQ, one of the things that they need is an ordinance from the city. In this case, the company is in our extraterritorial jurisdiction out west of Combs at Tam Lane and 107. So they need the city to pass an ordinance that basically does two or three things. It prohibits their use of groundwater as potable water, drinking water essentially, and that's in this ordinance. It supports their application to TCEQ. It confirms that public water is available in the area. And I think she's indicated to me, it's in the ordinance that it's available through North Alamo and/or East Rio Hondo Water Supply Corporation, they come together back there. And the ordinance also provides that the city has no responsibility or liability for any damages or injuries that may result. So they want to move forward with TCEQ, but to do this, they've got to get essentially our permission by us passing an ordinance because TCEQ wants, wants that ordinance from us. And then she, and I'm going to let, she's going to give you a little explanation, but then, then she's got to go to all, a number of other cities, water supply corporations, people who have water wells in the area. She has to compile an enormous amount of information to satisfy the TCEQ application. I'll let Ms. Bishop give you, she's got a brief explanation, but I believe a couple of slides for your review.
Thank you. Yes, my, my name is Cindy Bishop. I'm an environmental attorney and chemical engineer and I'm helping Valley Solvents on this MSD. I think municipal setting designations are a wonderful program. I have done at least 20 over the years and a lot like here, which will be the first one in a particular city. And I do think it's a really great tool to help facilitate closure. And I'm here on behalf of Valley Solvents. With me with Valley Solvents is President Bill Davis, the Vice President Daniel Bates, the Environmental Manager Russell I, and then the contractor, who's a professional geologist who's working with us on this, is Frank Clark. So I was going to just go through a few slides for those of you who aren't familiar with the MSD process. And I was here in the fall, speaking to the economic redevelopment people and a few people from city council, give an hour talk on what an MSD is about. So I just greatly shortened that to kind of tell you what it is. This is a program that was enacted by the Texas Legislature 10 years ago. And since then, there's been about 275 of these municipal setting designations issued throughout the state of Texas. The city of Brownsville has done one, for example. And it is a deed restriction, as Mr. Billby said, on only the MSD property. So in this case, the Valley Solvents property, which is a legal restriction to prohibit the use of groundwater for potable purposes, which they're not using anyway. So it's a way to facilitate closure. In other words, why clean up something to drinking water standards if you're not going to drink it anyway? It's a real waste of resources and a waste of time. And that's what the Texas Legislature realized back when they enacted this program about 10 years ago. And they do it in conjunction with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, the TCEQ, which is like the state version of the EPA. Just to, it does not affect any off-site properties, so that's a common misconception. So I wanted to point that out on this slide. Quickly, what's the process? This is just the first step in a multi-step process. The first thing we have to do is get the approval of the city to adopt an ordinance restricting the groundwater use. Then we also have to get resolutions from nearby cities and water utility that are within a five mile radius that have water supply wells. And then we submit a very comprehensive application to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. So they look at all this, all the data, and then if the application is complete, then they will certify that. Does that mean we're done? No, Valley Solvents is not done. That is just one component in order to get overall closure of the site. This addresses the groundwater. So a company will have to also look at other pathways, soil, surface water, air. We have done all that, but the last piece of the puzzle here is groundwater. One of the requirements of an MSD is to notify the surrounding community. So the ordinance states, I mean, sorry, the statute states that the municipalities within a half mile will have to be notified. In this case, there don't happen to be any other municipalities within a half mile. We are in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Harlingen and that encompasses the entire half mile radius. We also have to notify all the owners of water wells within a five mile radius and then retail public utilities and any municipalities that have public water supply wells within a five mile radius. And that is the North Alamo Water Supply Company, East Rio Hondo Water Supply Company, and City of Santa Rosa. So again, this is just one piece of the puzzle. Here's a picture of the Valley Solvents site. And if you can see the little rectangle, there's about 20 acres there which are, which will be the MSD property. This is Valley Solvents corporate headquarters. They've been here since 1965. And in the 1990s, it was discovered that there was a small leak from one of their tanks that had held one of their solvents called trichloroethylene. Valley Solvents went in and did some sampling and it turns out that there was some historical leakage that affected the soil and the groundwater of this trichloroethylene. Since then, they've been working with the TCEQ to try to clean up the groundwater and it's been 20 years, over 20 years. And they've tried a variety of techniques and this, this stuff is tricky. This is tricky stuff to clean up and none of the, the technology that been used that TCEQ has suggested have been very effective. So TCEQ suggested using one municipal setting designation to take care of the groundwater. So this is an example of some of the work that's been done out there. All these little dots are monitoring wells. We've taken a lot of samples throughout the property and the red ones are the impacted areas. So as you can see, it's kind of confined to the center of the property, kind of the middle of the property. This is a nice slide. I like this. This is a geological cross-section of the soil out there. But people would say, well, is the groundwater, is the impacted groundwater spreading? Well, oops, I'm sorry. The brown, the brown lines are clay layers. Those represent clay layers in the property and those act as barriers. And on the right is the Valley Solvents well. We are asking to restrict the groundwater use down to 100 feet, just out of an abundance of caution. And you can see you've got those brown clay layers which act as vertical barriers to keep any impacted groundwater from flowing deeper. And the next closest water supply well, the Alamo Water Supply well as an example, is over here and it is drilled down to 540 feet. So it is taking water from way down here at 540 feet. So there's no risk of the impacted groundwater from Valley Solvents impacting that, the North Alamo Water Supply well, which is one of the requirements that TCEQ has in order to, to grant this. And those of you that live out there, this is salty water. You don't want to drink it anyway. This is very brackish. The people in the area may use it to water some wands, but it's not, it's not drinkable water anyway. So, it's sort of, it's just a legal mechanism in place to prohibit what no one is doing anyway. No one's drinking the water because it's so, it's so brackish. And we have city water out there, city water, North Alamo Water Supply supplying water to the area, which is, again, one of the criteria. So, everyone's hooked up to public water supply, so no one's using the water. So, in summary, the source of the contamination out there is historic. It's from 60s and 70s. The source area has been removed. It's just a difficult thing to clean up to drinking water levels. The affected groundwater is localized and shallow, plus it's very salty. No local wells are threatened or affected. And then, the site meets the state criteria for an MSD because all the surrounding homes and businesses are supplied with a public water source. So, I think MSDs are a great benefit to the city. They're a great tool for economic development. It'd be nice to finally get this site closed, to get a nice closure, get it off the TCEQ's open case file after all these years. So, we ask that the city approve this ordinance, and I'm here, and our geologist is here, Valley Solvents is here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, you want to read the question?
All right, please. An ordinance of the city of Harligen prohibiting the use of designated groundwater from beneath certain property located at the northeast corner, Highway 107 and Tam Lane in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Harligen, Texas, in supporting certification of municipal setting designation by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, providing a penalty clause, providing severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Any questions?
Don't you bring the nation is only for that, is the latter, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I want you to approve this.
Second. Any other discussion? How many folks do you employ out there in Valley Solvents? Any of them live in Harligen?
Any of them live in Harligen?
Yeah.
I think they all live in Harligen.
Okay. Thank you for that. Unless there are any other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank you. Item seven, consider take action to approve the approval of the lease agreement between the Harligen Police Department, Ball at Valley Vista LLC, to lease a storefront at Harligen Valley Vista Ball for one year with the cost of $1 per year operated lease substation. Drop in.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm just here if you have any questions about the lease.
Is there a motion to approve the renewal?
I make the motion that we approve this.
Second. Good program, right?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider take action to accept bids on work contract for the 2014-15 general fund overlay project under bid 2015-07.
Good evening. The overlay project will include work on Wilson Road from 477 to Commerce, work on Halpin from Business 83 North to Crockett Road. Overlay project includes an addition of an alternate bid item, which is along Crockett Road from Halpin to east to Crockett Road. Project consists of rehab and overlay of existing roadways. On February the 24th, ever saved and opened a total of three bids for the proposed project. Other bids met the bid submitted requirements. It's in your packet. The lowest bid for the project was submitted by GNT Paving in the amount of a base bid of $782,042 and $12 cents, and an alternate bid of $71,349 for a total bid amount of $853,391 and $12 cents. Staff recommends that we accept a low bid submitted by GNT Paving in the amount of $853,391 and $12 cents.
Will the railroad be involved at all?
Ah, yes. We're coordinated with the railroad.
Okay, so they'll be coordinating
Yes.
Track level and everything?
Yeah.
I think when this is all completed, that we should probably have a big party out there.
I think so, too.
You know, everybody's been planning on it for decades.
Even a bigger one on Halpin Road. This is all budgeted, 100%?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes?
There, we have the money.
Okay. And, but we're not going to be able to do the balance of Crockett, the north and south section?
Not this year.
Okay.
The Wizard Row, yeah?
Yes.
No, Wilson was primary, I remember. That was primary.
That was for some of the years, that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But either the design calls for some concrete aprons for the trucks turning in to increase the longevity of the roadway and surface. The design is pretty well designed.
And then the railroad crossing at Halpin? Are we going to do anything special there to keep that from eroding?
Not, we're not doing planking, we're just doing asphalt for now. Maybe in the future.
Just an asphalt overlay? And the broken?
No, we're removing the asphalt that's there and redoing flexways and
So, we're going to restore the road to its original designated bit?
Correct.
Okay. But we're not going to do anything at the crossing?
No, the crossing was already improved with asphalt. We're not going in with concrete planking at this time.
That was my question.
We do not have the funding for that.
Okay.
Okay, we need a, we need a motion to award, I'm sorry, to accept and award the contract to GNT Paving for the base and the offload.
Submove.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right. Get to work.
Yes, please.
All right, item nine, consider take action to award bid and authorize city manager to execute concession agreement SB Fall Winter League for concession services at Harligen Sports Complex.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. This agenda here is to do two things, is request to award the bid and to allow the city manager to execute the concession agreement. We advertised the paper two consecutive Sundays in January. We received one bid. The bid was due February 3rd, and the staff feels comfortable with the single bidder. He is familiar with the area with the concession. He does a lot of work out there, and he runs some leagues out there as well. So, he's, he is familiar with the business. And you can see the backup, we send bids to eight or 10 possible proposers, but we only received one, so.
Was there any idea why nobody else even responded? That's what, my question was, did you send these people and you did?
Yes. Yeah, and we were in contact with them. We, we explained them what it was about, and we thought that we were going to get more bids, and I was surprised that we just received one.
I was surprised also.
You all, Tyson and the many more, is that all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there, is there a motion to award the bid and authorize the concession agreement with SB Fall Winter League?
I'll make the motion that we accept the bid, it's only one.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Well, that's an improvement, that's a, that's right.
Yes.
It's a better, much better arrangement.
Yes, sir.
It's good. Item 10, consider take action to authorize the city manager to execute the lease agreement between the city of Harligen and the Rio Grande Habitat for Humanity Police Appportionment of Long Sea Hill Building on Tyler Street.
Thank you, Mayor. We all know the good work that Habitat for Humanity does, especially in this community. They want to increase their, their staff presence here in Harligen, and they are asking to lease a cubicle, basically, at the Long Sea Hill Building. Staff is recommending approval. This would be, if approved, it would be a two-year initial lease at a dollar a year and with a one-year renewal. After the three years, we could always come back and renew it, if that's the desire of the commission. The staff is recommending approval, and the executive directors here, is there any questions?
This will provide them an opportunity to increase their presence, and I think the strategy is to increase the number of structures or houses that they're building in Harligen, correct?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Commissioners, appreciate this opportunity to partner and to strengthen our partnership with the city. What we're looking at is increasing our production through the operation crackdown lots and acquiring lots. It's difficult operating out of McAllen and, and working with families who live here who have a difficulty, a difficult time traveling to McAllen for interviews and so forth, so this gives us a place to base our operation out of Harligen so that we can have a greater impact on the community.
Mr. Lowry, you recently did other lots outside of our city in Cameron County, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, this would be just another place where people could come to, to find more about Habitat for Humanity without going to the McAllen area?
Exactly. This is going to be the base of operation, not just for Harligen, but throughout Cameron County as we try to expand our, our footprint and better the lives of the Rio Grande Valley.
I'll make the motion. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we authorize the city manager to execute the lease between the city of Harligen and the Rio Grande Habitat for Humanity for a portion of Long Sea Hill Building. For office space and the use of that space by the organization will assist in providing affordable housing to individuals in Harligen and Cameron County. It does serve a wonderful public purpose. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Wayne, this is a good way to strengthen our partnership, I appreciate it. It'd be good for the community and the citizens of Harligen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 11, consider take action to approve the lease agreement between the city of Harligen and Cameron County Elections Department and the Harligen CISD, although I have a feeling that the city secretary is going to tell us we're not going to have the use of voting equipment for the city of Harligen May 9th, 2015 general election for early voting for personal appearance election day.
Mayor, you're correct, the school is not having a joint, an election, so that only leaves us, so we have to modify the contract for the equipment. So, now, it's just a contract between us and the county for the use of the voting equipment. Or 113 of the marks, and I believe the cost is $3,000 and something else, it's in the contract, so.
Okay. Consider motion to approve the agreement as described by the city secretary.
Submove, Mayor. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 12, consider take action to postpone the regular receipt of the commission meeting March 18th due to certain members of the county voting out of town.
Mayor, that week is a spring break for, for the school district, and we didn't really have any pending items. We do have one item that we probably need to take care of, but we are, I talked to the mayor about putting in at a special meeting on the 18th, but at noon. So, other than that, we don't have any pending business that we need to take care of, so we need to move it, you know, further.
Any suggestions for a date? The next following Wednesday. March 25th.
Twenty, yeah, 25.
March 25th. Is there a motion to approve, reschedule the next meeting to March 25th?
Submove.
Okay.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13, board appointments. Do you want any board appointments? Board appointments?
Yes, I have a board appointment, but first I have to announce a resignation to a board, then I'm going to appoint somebody to the same board. Wayne Lowry has turned in his written resignation for the Parks Board, so I'm accepting his resignation and appointing Eduardo Sanchez to the Harligen Parks Board.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve board appointments?
Submove. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14, citizen communication.
Joe Rubio?
Okay, there's no other citizen communication, then ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned. Good night, thank you.